Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the January 27th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Well, at 9:45, we're supposed to have Captain Resendez give a presentation to the Board to support the installation of MTTs in the patrol cars, which allows the deputies to remain in the field, giving them direct access to the leads, records, and jail system. Under Resolution, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved, except a number nine of 19 I would like to hold for further review.
I second.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
I do not see a sheet for personnel unless Mr. Cordes is going to request an executive session.
I was confirming a council, excuse me.
Are we going to have an executive session?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to request an executive session for the express purpose of discussing potential new hires, ongoing union negotiations, and Mr. Ennis and I will both be briefing the Board on some matters of litigation. So those are all the three.
Not new litigation, I hope.
We will get sued. I think you're going to make it to the end of the month without being sued, but it's pending litigation issues, and some of them are pre-litigation issues that are still covered by the same exemption under the Sunshine Law.
Instruct the Clerk to advertise for bids for computer-related hardware maintenance for Lorraine County countywide. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on February 4th and 11th, and to be received on February 25th at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room. There will be a pre-bid walk-through on February 18th at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
I'll so move.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Community Development, instruct the Clerk to advertise notice of the second public hearing for the filing of an application to the state of Ohio to participate in the Small City CDBG Economic Development Program, to be held on Thursday, February 10th at 10:15. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on January 28th and February 4th, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Emergency Management and Homeland Security Office, authorize the local emergency planning district to apply for the $71,000 to the State Emergency Response Commission for County Hazmat Program.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the CBCF, authorize the execution of a Second Amendment to an agreement of a sublease with the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction, and accept it consented to by the Ohio Building Authority pertaining to the financing of a portion of the cost of the Lorraine County community-based correctional facility, Project Number 99 CBCF-02.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under the Clerk of Courts, authorize Ronald Napakowski, Lorraine County Clerk of Courts, to utilize County's Laura Met Visa credit card now to exceed $2,000 for the year 2005. Utilization for this card is for the purchase of gas, oil, emergency purchases, and maintenance of county-owned or leased vehicles and work-related expenditures, to include food, transportation, conferences, lodging, telephone, and internet service, provided expenses in accordance with ORC 301.27.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under MRDD, approve change order number two to JL Riker, Inc., Alariah, for crediting the amount of $39,435.20 for unused contingency on the MRDD driveway and parking lot improvement project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorize the release of retainage to Gene Reeser, Inc., Alariah, in the amount of $7,027 plus interest as the final payment for work performed on the Meister Road Group home.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, receive and file unpaid fees from juvenile court by the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office for the year 2004 in the amount of $47,564.50 to forgive the same.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Receive and file the annual report in accordance with ORC 325.31 submitted by Lorraine County Sheriff's Office on fees due and unpaid for more than one year prior to January 1st, 2005, in the amount of $885,580.51.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
No reports or comments this morning, except to reiterate the need for the stated purposes for an executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Mr. Cordes already took my report away from me. I just need an executive session, that's all.
Commissioners' Report.
Commissioner Kukowski? I'd just like to let my colleagues know that I had a meeting yesterday in Cleveland with Jimmy Demora and Tim Hagan, just to open up the lines of communication with Cuyahoga County, and hopefully work collaboratively on future projects, and it was a really good meeting, and hopefully we'll continue that in the future. Are we good?
No report.
I have two items I'd like to mention. Number one is regarding the Farm Service Agency, which is located at our complex. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm such a quiet little girl. Our Farm Service Agency, which is located on Russia Road, will be closing within the next 120 days approximately. They have received a news release from the Columbus office due to some consolidations, probably the main reason being that there is no chief person there, but there are two clerical staff. We will be consolidating with Medina, and farmers who need the service from that office can either go to the Medina office or go to the Erie Huron office. And I spoke to Larry Adams at the State Office, and he said this decision was made by a committee of five, who are all farmers, and this was their recommendation. So it's not what we would like to hear, and presently, the service will still be provided at the office on Russia Road, and I assume they will be giving them a date, but it's within the next 120 days, probably. And, of course, we rent that facility to them, so Mr. Cordes will have to be making some adjustments. They'll probably be sending a notice to you, because we have a lease with them. Thank you. And the next item is a nice one. Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District has sent out their lovely newsletter. I'm sure you've got it. I think it's wonderful. Dan isn't even here today, so I can't pick on him and his purple tie. But it's a really nice newsletter. I was pleased to get it and receive it. And I also want to mention that Dan has been named the President of the Association of Ohio Recyclers, which I think is quite an honor for our county. So I just wanted to congratulate him on that. But he's not here, so we can't congratulate him. Might maybe we say it later.
We can leave a couple of them to you.
Yes, and I think there's an upcoming event that they're having in Columbus. So anyway, I thought that was pretty nice for Lorraine County. So those are the two items I'd like to mention this morning. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Under the Clerk's report, just to inform you that a petition was received pursuant to ORC 709.03 notifying the Board that the residents wished our signatures to be removed for the petition of annexation, and Ford said petition to be withdrawn, and as regards to the one in Pittsfield, to the city of Oberlin, the corner of 58. You guys haven't seen it yet.
I was going to say we have.
But it's...
Discussion.
And then also, the College did not air the last board meeting on cable television this past Saturday due to an error. They will make up the state this Thursday at 9:00 p.m. Board Correspondents?
I'll move the reading be waived.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Do you want to do the presentation first?
Yes.
Captain Resendez, Chair?
Morning, Commissioners and everyone. I'm just going to give a brief explanation here, and then Captain Ennis is going to give a little bit more detailed one. Phil Stamedy, Lorraine County Sheriff. Since 2001, the Lorraine County Sheriff's Office has been exploring getting these mobile data terminals, these MDTs as they call them, the computers that are in the cars. And actually, what we're looking for this morning in the Commissioners is a letter of support and a resolution, so we can bring the Sheriff's Office, I guess into the 21st century with this technology. Most of the major cities, obviously, Lorraine County have it already. Lorraine has it. Alariah has it. I know Amherst Police Department and La Grange also has this technology. And I think what it'll do is make the Sheriff's Office, obviously, more safe for the officers and for the citizens. We've been in contact with Congressman Brown, Congresswoman Capter, Senator Voinovich, and DeWine about federal funding. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Captain Resendez, and he'll give a little bit more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Resendez, Lorraine County Sheriff's Office. I'd like to thank you and the Board of Commissioners and the citizens to give me the opportunity to present this to you, and just give you a brief history of what we're talking about here. What we're talking about is not new to law enforcement. This is something that started to make its way into the technological aspects of law enforcement in the early 1990s. And as the Sheriff said, we're talking about mobile data terminals, basically laptop computers that are installed in our patrol units that give the capability of the officer, in our case, the deputy, to access a central record system that is kept at our central headquarters. And as again, the Sheriff said, several municipalities in Lorraine County have these, Lorraine, Alariah, some of the smaller agencies. But they were able to acquire them by federal grants, either the COPS More or COPS Ahead Grants, in the mid to latter 1990s. Both of those grants have since sort of dried up, and they're not available. Those monies have been earmarked for other federal programs. What we're asking the Commissioners here is a resolution indicating that this Board supports our efforts to pursue federal appropriations fundings. And I guess let me split this a little bit and explain the importance of the mobile data terminals, and then I'll explain the funding portion of this. As I said, the terminals are installed in our patrol units, and it gives the officer the capability to access both our records system and our jail system, the ability to access these record systems almost instantaneously. Information in regards to previous reports, mugshot photos, Bureau of Motor Vehicle photos, jail information, and most importantly, leads information. That's the information that we get back from the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, license plate drivers' license, wanted individuals. The ability to access leads has statistically proven that the stop is a better quality stop. Let's face it, the police work sometimes deals with hunches, and if I'm driving around and I see a plate and I have the availability to run this plate from my cruiser, and it comes back that this individual is driving either with no driver's license, driving under suspension, or maybe wanted, the quality of stop is just a better stop, you know? And it just leads to a better, more effective and efficient law enforcement agency. Not to mention that if you can do this, if an officer can do this from his cruiser, it ties up less radio airtime, and that deals back. And if you check with any police executive, I think that they will tell you that the less radio time that is freed up, that's what they strive for. Lorraine County has about 495 square miles. Out of that square, those square miles, we're responsible for about 357 of those. If an officer can remain in his area of responsibility, let's face it, it makes for a better, more effective and efficient use of that patrol time versus driving back to headquarters or driving to a substation to file a report. Whatever they can do on station, they should be able to do in the car. When Sheriff Stamedy took office about four years ago, he was able to obtain the funding to upgrade our communication system. And I think this is just the next step in that process. In regards to the funding aspect of it, as I indicated, most grants have dried up, and they're no longer there. What we're pursuing is federal appropriations. And these appropriations, as Mr. Cordes will attest, that they're projects by our federal representatives, our congressmen, our senators, and we apply to them. There are no matching funds that the county's responsible for. That it's a project that our representatives say, hey, in my district, in my area of responsibility, this is what I want. And we apply, and part of that application process is a resolution from our Funding Board. And again, that's what we're asking for. This is just the first step. These data terminals can be tied into other agencies. We can be the central agency that maybe some of these smaller agencies can piggyback on for maybe a fee that's somewhere down the road. These mobile data terminals can be tied into security for our Justice Center, for our jail, that just by the stroke of an internet address, you can access security cameras from a cruiser. I mean, it has countless measures, but this is just the first step, just to get these in the cruisers. And again, that's what we're asking that the Board, just give us a resolution allowing us to pursue this funding. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Commissioners?
Answer any questions, the Sheriff and myself.
Jim, you have comments?
Just that I had the pleasure of sitting with Sheriff Stamedy and Captain Resendez when we held office hours with Senator Voinovich, his aide was in, and they were pitching their project. We were pitching another project. We're going to continue to pitch some projects, and I hope that the Board would support them. I'm sure you will. And when we get ready to pitch some more projects, I'd like to let you know, so maybe we can go together and make sure that we're all visiting all the right people, too. So we'll let you know what we're up to, and even though we're there pitching for different projects, we can still be there for Lorraine County.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a dollar amount that this project would cost, so we know what we're talking about?
Yeah, a good estimate, Commissioner. And that is going to vary. Let me give you a brief Reader's Digest version of how that can work. These data terminals are obviously wireless, and it can go one of two ways. Cellular service, which I believe the city of Alariah utilizes, it has a smaller initial investment, but you pay a monthly service for your airtime, just as our cellular phones. As the city of Lorraine has, they have a radio frequency. They apply to the FCC. The FCC gives them a radio frequency, and that's theirs. There's no monthly airtime. It's just as if it's a cruiser radio, but there's a bigger initial frequency. I could tell you, we received one quote from our records management software company, OSSI, and for the whole package, we're talking roughly about a half a million dollars. And this is for 38, we have 38 road patrol cruisers, and that would outfit all 38.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question. Could this possibly fall under Homeland Security type of funding?
Good question, Sheriff.
Yeah, Commissioner, we tried that already. That was one of the aspects we tried already, and they said it does not fall under that criteria. Because, and actually, like Captain Resendez says, in 2001, I tried to get COPS, the Head and COPS More to fund mine, and when I talked to the federal government, they go, well, guess what, Sheriff? We're not doing that anymore. I guess you got in a little bit too late. So we have been trying other avenues of money. But unfortunately, Homeland Security, even though I think it benefits the whole county because we're the Sheriff's Office, they said that we think it's just benefiting the Sheriff's Office and not the rest of the county as a whole. But like the Captain mentioned, the future things would be that police departments would be able to confer with each other over these laptops in the future. And I think that regionalizes things a lot, but unfortunately, Homeland Security people say it doesn't fit that criteria.
So they gave us the radios so we could talk to each other, so we can all be on one frequency, but they won't let us coordinate the laptops, huh?
Yeah, I get confused when it comes to that, too. They told me...
Yeah, because I mean, that's why we placed all those radios, so everybody was on the same system from one end of the county to the other. And it seems to make perfect sense. Maybe we need to beat on them a little bit more, too.
We can try that. And I, the county minister is on that committee, too. But I know there's certain restrictions and certain rules on that, too. And I just wanted to piggyback off one thing that Captain Resendez said. This system does have some things where it can grow, where the county can benefit some money from, especially if you go with the radio frequency when you transmit the data that way. We talked to the people. They said even like your county engineer could join in on this thing, where he'd have a system where he would know where all his plow trucks are at. It would tell them where they're at, what locations, the speed that they might be traveling...
It has the GPS all...
Exactly. That comes with the system. And where I'm saying it's a safety factor for our officers, it would also tell us where our cruisers are at. So if, say, if we have a serious crime, bank robbery, whatever happened in a location, the communications officer can look up at the Board and say, gee, I got a car a block away from that, and just say, hey, you know, this is what we got, and there you are. So if an officer ends up chasing somebody out of his cruiser, they're going to know exactly where he's at that way. So it definitely has a lot of benefits.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any further questions from the Commissioners? I'd like to move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution of support, as the Sheriff has requested.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you. Keep us informed of what's going on, please.
Public comment?
We didn't do the Board Correspondents. Did we?
Yes, we did.
Morning, Shirley.
Would you like me to do it again?
Morning. Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. I'd hate to have you be able to leave so early. Several weeks ago, somebody gave me a copy of an editorial from the Butler Eagle in Butler, Pennsylvania, in the area of Butler, Pennsylvania. It's dated December 30th. Past Commissioners, the past Commissioners' group did hold several evening meetings that were well-attended and appreciated. However, this editorial has several suggestions worthy of consideration. The first is that even if Commissioners are opposed to holding all of their meetings in the evening, they should at least establish a policy whereby the meetings at which they introduce and discuss the subsequent year's proposed budget, as well as the meeting at which they adopt the budget, our evening sessions, whether or not a tax increase is part of the budget agenda. The second suggestion is that the Commissioners hold at least one town hall type meeting a year, at which the Commissioners review all important issues on which they are working, and allow residents to comment on any county business-related topic that they choose. Prior to those meetings, budget and town hall, they should make an extra effort to publicize where these sessions will be held, and at least, and they should be held at different locations. The last comment from this editorial, which is quite good. I was going to make copies for you. I wasn't going to do it today, but when you had so much time, I decided to. It is often said that people who don't vote have no grounds to complain if the wrong candidate is elected, but elected officials who do not encourage public participation have no grounds to assume that what they are doing is embraced by the majority of people whom they were elected to serve. And I must say that this past Commission group has been very open to public participation, and I hope the new one will continue to do that, too. I want to make one comment about the two new Commissioners. We appreciate Mr. Kayla's voice. We can really hear him.
Thank you, Shirley.
Elizabeth Rumix, Oberlin. I have a couple of things. One, the mention you made of the Farm Service Agency being moved or closed, does this include the Agricultural Extension Service?
No.
Oh, I'm very glad to hear that, because even though I'm a city person, really, I do use them, and other people are very glad to have them there, so I'm glad to have that.
No, and thank you for allowing me to clarify that. No, there are three agencies there. The Ohio Extension Service, OSU, and the Lorraine County Soil and Water Conservation District, and then this Farm Service Agency, and this only relates to the Farm Service Agency.
Good. Thank you. Then, as part of the continuing education credit earning that I hope for, I am just interested in curiosity, really, about number 17 and 18, the unpaid fees. Could somebody explain why they're unpaid, or whether it makes any difference to the budget, or just what that's all about?
For the Sheriff? Yeah.
Sheriff's here if he wants to.
Yes, and I don't remember last year, that same question came up last time. You asked it last year. But, and that's okay, because we don't mind answering. Yeah, there is, and I can tell you, the reason the fees increased so much is because in September of '03, the legislature actually passed a bill that raised the fees. And I don't believe they've been raised for like 20 or 25 years. So yeah, as you can see, it went from 300 and something thousand to 800 and something thousand. Unfortunately, most of those fees in there are from state of Ohio cases. And the problem you have with that is, and as you can see, they make up the majority of the unpaid criminal cases, and that's where you have a lot of indigent people, people who are still having their cases adjudicated, and those fees are almost uncollectible. Now, by law, obviously, we have to report this. Now, any, it does go back to the clerk, and they try to collect, you know, by tax liens or whatever they put it on. But like I say, can you get blood from a turnip? No. If nobody has the money, you can't get it from them. So that's where that disparate amount comes in. But they will try to collect them, and the juvenile fees are forgiven. And that's a separate section of the law, and that's just, we have to report it, and they are forgiven that way.
Sheriff, I think some of those people may actually be in jail, too.
And that's true, too. It's cases that have not been adjudicated, and some of them are still in jail. So that's, that's why.
And thank you for that explanation and the question, Elizabeth.
In other words, it's not a drain on the county's budget.
Well, it would be nice if we had the money, but we don't anticipate it coming in. It would probably be extra if, in fact, we did receive it. Is that fair, Sheriff?
Thank you. And one last thing. Last year, towards the end of the year, we were often able to pick up at the back of the room there, a State House report, which sort of indicated what was going on in Columbus. And those reports were sometimes had some items that were of some interest, and I would spread them around among people when I thought they might be interested. I've noticed that we haven't had it this year. Perhaps it's still being organized, but I would just like to make a plea that if possible, there be a resumption of the State House report, even though I realize that copying it will be a drain on the county's budget.
Well, as long as we can copy it on both sides. Can we do that, Theresa?
It's from CCAO bulletin.
Can you make copies of it, is that?
We'll figure it out. There'll be a bill.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst Oberlin. I wasn't planning to come up here, but I suddenly realized that next week's meeting won't be on television until after the first Lorraine County Community Alliance meeting of the new year, with new commissioners and new elected officials in some of the jurisdictions represented by the community alliance. I just hope we'll see some of you or all of you there, and some of the rest of us there as well. And that's Friday, the fourth of February, at nine o'clock at the North Ridgeville Library, I believe. And all that's available somewhere, but...
Yes, and we're dealing with a very important issue, and thanks for bringing that up. We're talking about local government assistance funds and some of the potential cuts and difficulty. They have some wonderful speakers, by the way.
Oh, just because you're one of them.
So it's a pretty important issue. And, you know, we had the opportunity last week to talk to Senator Armbruster, the whole board was able to discuss that with him, but this is a very, very significant issue to Lorraine County. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
And David, I'm going to continue to be the secretary of the alliance, so...
You'll see there.
Yep, you'll see me there.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. Then I move we go into executive sessions for the purposes outlined by the assistant, excuse me, the administrator and the assistant prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, and welcome to the January twentieth meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second discussion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Number nine, under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as we can on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, at this time, I would like to request an executive summary at the end of the meeting to discuss potential new hires.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Number ten, designate personal exemptions for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board, Lorraine County Commissioners Office pursuant to ORC Section 124.11A and eight, and the Ohio Administrative Code, Section 123, one through five oh-two. Administrative assistance to Commissioner Ted Kallo and Lauren Kukowski.
Commissioners have any questions?
Nope.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Establish compensation for law directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal courts, ORC nineteen oh-one point thirty-four C for the year two thousand and five. Lorraine, Illyria, and Oberlin will receive ten thousand dollars each. North Ridgeville and Amherst, seventy-five hundred. Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village and Sheffield Lake, five thousand. South Amherst and Wellington, two thousand. And Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermeil, and Long Range will receive one thousand.
This is a negotiated item. Mr. Ennis, would you just like to briefly explain it, please?
The Ohio Revised Code requires the Commissioners to, in effect, pay a share to reimburse the municipalities for the work that their local prosecutors do in prosecuting state cases. So some time ago, we met with all the law directors and solicitors of the municipalities and kind of worked out this compensation formula.
Okay.
So this has been by agreement with everybody, I'd say, five, six years now, maybe longer than that.
Thank you, Jerry. Also moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Child and Families Council, instruct clerk to advertise requests for proposals for Lorraine County Children's and Families Council bedding materials. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on January twenty-fourth and thirty-first, and to be opened at two PM on February seventh in Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
We need Development Department, extend the completion date for RE Rice, Inc., until May fifteenth, two thousand and five, for the City of Amherst-Mawneeding Park Project. This was a CDBG FYO three activity in the amount of nine thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Is this for playground equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Twining?
Yes, it is playground equipment, and it is for Amherst City, and it's from the CDBG block grants. They're putting in handicapped accessible equipment, so it's an ADA compliance issue.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise notice of public hearing for the first CDBG FYO five public hearing on February tenth. Notice will be published in the Morning Journal on January twenty-seventh and February third.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise requests for qualifications for proposals, RFQs, RFPs, for Lorraine County's fiscal two thousand and five Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP application, preparation, CHIP grant administration, implementation, and community housing improvement strategic update for the fiscal year two thousand and five. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on January twenty-fourth, and to be received no later than four PM on February seventh in Lorraine County Purchasing Department.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise RFQs, RFPs, for Lorraine County Community Block Grant and CDBG infrastructure programs. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on January twenty-eighth, and to be received no later than four PM on February fourteenth in Lorraine County Purchasing Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve and enter into four D purchase of service contracts between Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the County Prosecutor's Office, Clerk of Courts and Domestic Relations Court, Juvenile Division. Authorize Director of Job and Family to execute documents on behalf of the Board effective retroactive January first, two thousand and five, through December thirty-first, two thousand and five. For the Prosecutor's Office, the non-federal matching funds is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Federal matching is four hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-six cents, for a total of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Clerk of Courts, non-federal matching is fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents. Federal matching funds is thirty-one thousand, six dollars and eighty cents, for a total of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty. Under Domestic Relations, non-federal matching is a hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Federal matching is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents, for a total of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. For Domestic Courts, juvenile, non-federal matching funds is seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Federal matching is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, for a total of two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
DAC is here from the Child Support Enforcement Agency. Do you have any comments?
Only that, on all four D contracts, there's federal funds that come to the county if there's a match of thirty-four percent. So we get sixty-six percent from the federal government. The Child Support Enforcement Agency has over thirty thousand child support and spousal support cases in Lorraine County, and some of the work that we must do on those cases needs to be done by these departments, and thus, we contract with them to provide various services.
Thank you, D. Also moved for approval.
Second. Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve and enter in Amendment Number One of the Transportation Agreement between Job and Family Services and Life Care Ambulance, Inc. This amendment will reflect an increase in the contract value by ten thousand, total contract not to exceed twenty thousand. All other provisions of Resolution zero four dash four fifty-four adopted June seventeenth remain in effect.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District, fund the requests on Lorraine City Schools in the amount of eighty thousand for four playground projects. They will be purchasing playground equipment that will be used at the elementary schools.
Mr. Billman?
Dan Billman, Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan. Lorraine School, City Schools initiated some contact with us a month or so ago. They have a two-hundred-and-sixteen-million-dollar building program going on in, in Lorraine. And so we started discussions on supplying some grant funding for new playgrounds for those particular schools. The, there is four schools at this time that's involved. We thought that probably about twenty thousand dollars apiece for the schools with a total of eighty thousand would help them out greatly. The material that's going to be used in the playgrounds is going to be at least fifty percent recycled material, which includes plastic, steel, aluminum. The total cost of the playground is probably about fifty thousand, and the, they're going to use also rubber tires as a mulch. So the total project is going to be fifty, fifty thousand per playground. We're going to, what I would recommend is that we give them eighty thousand, twenty thousand per playground, which will, will, will help them out greatly. We do have some people from Lorraine City Schools with us today. Dan DiNacola, he's the Director of Facilities, he's here. Dean Schnur, he's the Director of Community Relations. Dean is here. Robert Campana, Robert is on the Bond Oversight Committee for the schools. And Elaine Banks, Elaine is the Acting Superintendent. Dr. Dean Morgan is, is on sick leave. So I think Mr. Schnur would like to give you a presentation.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for inviting us here today, and also thank you to Mr. Billman. I'd like to give you just a brief update on our project, and then extend a request to you for the money. As Mr. Billman mentioned, Dr. Morgan sends her regrets, she recently had some surgery, and she's recovering right now, so she can't be here. As you know, we're in the middle of a two-hundred-and-sixteen-million-dollar construction and renovation project. When it is completed, we will have thirteen new buildings and seven renovated, which will provide a new face for all of Lorraine City Schools, a wonderful opportunity for all of our students. Most recently, we completed our first building, the Frank Hocento Elementary School, was completed on October, well, we have a dedication on October thirty-first of last year. Fabulous turnout for that event, gave the opportunity a chance, or gave the community an opportunity to view the new buildings and some of the offerings there. One unique portion of the Frank Hocento School, and will be included in all of our schools, are the playground concept. We actually have three playgrounds located at each of the elementary schools. They're separated by fences, and they're designated by grade level. One for K and pre-K, one for first and second grade, and then one for third, fourth, and fifth grade. This system allows for better surveillance of the playgrounds, of course, and provides a heightened level of safety for the kids. You wouldn't want a kindergartner playing on equipment that's designed for a sixth grader, could lead to injuries and problems. At the Frank Hocento School, we purchased the equipment, and also, as Mr. Billman mentioned, we purchased ground cover. The ground cover was a hundred percent recycled material in the form of rubber. In the schools that we have opening for the rest of the year, which total four elementaries and two middle schools, we would like to change the specs for those playground equipment. As Mr. Billman pointed out, we would like to require fifty percent of the material in the equipment be comprised of recycled steels, rubbers, whatever materials are necessary. Unfortunately, the state of Ohio does not designate enough funding to do some of the extra things we'd like to do, like using recycled materials. But they have left an opening for us in the form of locally funded projects. This is a way to obtain some funds locally through businesses, through government entities, or other means, to expand on the current project and provide an even better opportunity for our kids. You've probably read about the smart boards that we were installing in Frank Hocento School and intend to install in the other schools. That's part of a locally funded initiative. We're also working on a locally funded initiative for our auditoriums and the high schools. We're asking you to provide us with these dollars to help us fund the playground equipment in the four elementary schools which we have opening. As Mr. Billman pointed out, the equipment itself costs about fifty thousand dollars. The ground padding costs about twenty thousand dollars. So the total cost for each of those elementary schools would be seventy thousand dollars. The money which we're requesting from the county would help us out tremendously, and let us provide these services to students which aren't stipulated by the state. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Schnur. At this time, I would make a formal request to the Commissioners that you do consider the eighty thousand dollar grant to Lorraine City Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Billman.
Do you have any questions for me?
Questions? Commissioner? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Theresa, before we vote on it, I'm very impressed with what Lorraine City Schools are doing. And even though I live in the Amherst School District, my business is located in Lorraine, I think it's a very important part of the rebirth of downtown Lorraine and the rest